Town Council Special Meeting Workshop, February 10, 2025. I'm going to start in prayer. Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. Pledge. Roll call, Mr. Biragod.
Here.
Mr. Punchak.
Here.
Ms. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Christopheraro.
Here.
And Kim Mousier. Presentation by Pound Hill Realty LLC. Applicant followed by questions and answers with individual council members. Tonight, depending on how long this takes, the actual questions and answers from the public may have to hold off till the 18th because there is no actual open forum on this agenda, but we can see how long we go. A petition slash application for an amendment to the zoning ordinance pursuant to Rhode Island general law is subsection 45-24-50 and 45-24-51, 54-24-53 as follows. Petition slash application for amendment to zoning ordinance filed by Pound Hill Realty LLC, 618 Greenville Road, North Smithfield, 02896. The owner of the parcel of land situated off Old Oxford Road, Pound Hill Road, and Pine Hill Road in the town of North Smithfield, more particularly described as Town of North Smithfield Tax Assessor's Lot 7, Lot 38, consisting of 89.44 acres, subject property petition slash application attached. Text amendment and zoning map amendment to the zoning ordinance of the Town of North Smithfield is zoning ordinance. The proposed zoning amendment will create a new zoning district, industrial special management District 1 overlay. The intent of the district is to allow mining, quarrying, sand and gravel extraction, loom stripping, stone cutting operations, crushing, washing, and/or processing of materials. The zoning map amendment proposes to amend the zoning designation of the parcel of land located at 14 Pine Hill Road in the town of North Smithfield, more specifically described as Assessor's Lot 7, Lot 38, the property from Rural Agriculture RA and Rural Estate Agriculture REA to industrial special management District 1 overlay, proposed text amendment and map attached. Anyone want to make a motion to proceed into this?
No, Madam President, there won't be any motions tonight.
Just go.
Is that me? I'm sorry. The way it's set up in this workshop is just a presentation from the applicant and question and answers from the council. There's no vote or deliberation by the council tonight.
Okay.
Madam President, before we move forward with discussion, I have been advised by the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, as an abutter to the Pound Hill Quarry on Pine Hill Road, I have been advised to recuse myself from discussion as well as decision as a town councillor.
Okay, thank you. Is somebody presenting tonight?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Bill Landry. I'm a partner with Bliss &amp; Kavanaugh in Providence, and I'm representing the petitioner, Pound Hill Realty. If I may, I know some of you may already have it, but I want to just pass out the amendment and map, the proposed map provision, because I'll be going through it. I think it might be helpful if you have it for reference. Thank you. I do want to thank you for scheduling this for a workshop. We know it's not typical for zoning amendments. On this one, we requested it for a couple of reasons. This is a very complicated property. Its zoning status and DNA spans more than 70 years. The property's been tied up in 30 years of litigation that has not produced much clarity at this point. It's a confusing piece of property. It's a very confusing zoning status, and our concern was that if we arrived on one night to try to present this all at once, it would be very confusing. We thought it might be easier to just tell us what we're going to tell you, try to simplify it, and answer questions you may have, and also it will give you time to think about these issues before you have to consider them more formally on the 18th. We want to be clear that it's our interest to try to cooperate with the town in a reasonable solution for this property, one that's very overdue. There are legal deadlines on dealing with petitions to amend zoning ordinances, 45 days to the planning board, 60 days for the council. We're already past that period in the schedule that we have. We have no aversion to that being pushed out if it's constructive and if the council feels like there's something more they want us to do, more information that it needs. Same thing with the planning board. We'll be telling them the same thing on Thursday night. We're not trying to run anybody over here, but this has been a long developing problem, this mutual problem between the town and the business owner, and it's not an easy solution. And it may take a little time for everybody to fully understand the issues and get on board. So I want to put that out there, that this is an opening and an invitation for comment as much as it is an effort to explain what the land is about, the use on the property, what the proposal is in the text amendment, and then thirdly, why we're proceeding in this fashion with a text amendment to the ordinance as opposed to some other approach to trying to break through and find a planning solution for this piece of property. We're talking, I'd like to direct your attention first to the property itself. I know many of you already are familiar with the layout of the property, but there is a large size 11 by 17 plan that's folded as part of your package that can be opened. And I think it would be helpful to describe here what we're talking about and what's around it so that you can get a better sense of the lay of the land. And I apologize if some of you know all of this, but I am assuming that there'll be a lot of people involved in this process that might benefit from a little bit of explanation. We're dealing with the 89-acre parcel whose boundaries are outlined in kind of a pinkish-red here. The lighter gray areas are the significantly disturbed areas of the property. Areas have been mined for more than 70 years in a progressive fashion, as well as other areas that are to be mined as part of the operation. We have two superfund sites in fairly close proximity. The Wilson Resource Recovery Superfund Site is to the north. It doesn't show on this version of the plan, but our overhaul neighborhood is one consisting of distressed, very unique, environmentally compromised properties. So we've got the Wilson Superfund Site to the north, and this is north, south, east, and west, just as we would expect here. But then we've also got the Western Sand and Gravel Site, which is at the lower left-hand side of the plan, just to the southwest, bordering us on the southwest. That's the western sand and gravel. That's the western superfund site at this time. That's under the control of the EPA. Then when we move to the other side of the property, we've got over on the southeast, off the southeast border of our property, we have the North Smithfield Auto Salvage Operation there. It's kind of a strange configuration of, it looks like rows of trees and clearings between them, but those are actually rows of cars. That's, as you probably know, a massive salvage operation, a highly industrial use just to the southeast of that property. And then if we move to the left of that a little bit, we have some residential housing in that area that is accessed from Douglas Turnpike from the south and Pound Hill Road. There are a number of residences there, and our understanding is that because of the environmentally compromised nature of the area and the absence of any public water or sewer facilities, that water's actually trucked in to some or most of those houses in that area. So that's our immediate abutter to the south.
Excuse me, since we don't, do you have this that we can put up so everyone else can see it, or at least can you hold it up when you're kind of explaining?
Can you do that? Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Take your time. Thank you. Paul, do you want to hit the light? Is that where you?
Yeah, I don't know which one.
That's better.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Just to summarize again, north is the Wilson Resource Recovery Superfund Site. To the west of us is the Western Sand and Gravel Superfund Site. This is the truck body business, the custom bodies for types of commercial vehicles. And as we move over to the eastern portion of the site, in our southeast corner, these little modules here, these are stacks of automobiles at North Smithfield Auto Salvage Operations. And then to our south, there are a number of residential house lots here as part of a residential agricultural zone to which water is delivered. There's no water or sewer in this area. So our 89-acre parcel here, this is what's been mined, the wider areas. This is not yet mined. That's currently zoned REA, Residential Estate Agricultural. The permitted use is residential estates on large density. I think it's safe to say that what's permitted on this property will never occur here. The property cannot accommodate residential development. There are no utilities. There's no feasible way to have residential development here. It's complicated by its surroundings, the contamination that surrounds it, and the lack of available water or sewer infrastructure to support residential activity. It's also complicated by a history of use of the property as a quarry and sand and gravel and stone operation, a long history that preceded zoning that's been interpreted in pieces over the years by the courts. But after 30 years of litigation, to this day, there's only one issue that's been resolved, and it has to do with the road permits and
The property cannot accommodate residential development. There are no utilities, there's no feasible way to have residential development here. It's complicated by its surroundings, the contamination that surrounds it, and the lack of available water or sewer infrastructure to support residential activity. It's also complicated by a history of use of the property as a quarry and sand and gravel and stone operation, a long history that preceded zoning. That's been interpreted in pieces over the years by the courts, but after thirty years of litigation, to this day, there's only one issue that's been resolved, and it has to do with the road permits and the issue of whether the town's issuance of road permits somehow precludes the town from applying the earth removal ordinance and other issues. It's simply the issue of a stoppel, a legal doctrine of a stoppel. The nonconforming nature of the use has not been definitively determined by the court one way or the other. That's a decision for the court, that this is a legally nonconforming use. And it's also a decision for the court that's not yet been made about the expansion of a mining use. A mining use, when it's a nonconforming legal grandfathered use, unlike other uses, because its nature is to expand, every bucket of sand or gravel or stone is an expansion of the use. Mining uses are generally allowed, and there's Rhode Island precedent on this, although we won't go into all the legal issues tonight, but they're usually allowed to expand to the property line where there's been some type of mining use that's already underway. This ninety, eighty-nine acres has been merged by the zoning ordinance as a single zoning lot, and its limits are indicated here by red, in red. In theory, it could come right to the edge of the industrial area and without a lot of natural controls. So what's resulted from this period, there's been litigation, there were stays, there's currently a stay from the court to send the matter back to an administrative process. We had a choice of maybe pursuing a use variance because the only use allowed is not permitted on, is not feasible for the property. But then again, that could be a court battle or a zoning board battle, but no real planning of the future of the site. It's a site that conventional zoning doesn't really help us with because the permitted uses are not feasible and because it's this long pattern of use that will affect court decisions on the future. But the town has no control over it, has very little transparency. And we do realize and appreciate that one of the byproducts of that is that every ten or twenty years, when somebody asks a question, it's very difficult for the town manager or the town council or the town attorneys to satisfy citizen inquiries about this site. It's regulated by EPA, it's regulated by DEM, there are a lot of things going on, there are a lot of people that say a lot of things about what's going on. But it's very, very difficult for the town of Smithfield and its officials to diagnose this property at any given point in time and answer a question intelligently. And that's what happens when there's a lack of planning. It's nobody's fault that no one's been able to plan this site, but it's our proposal that the zoning ordinance be amended in a way that provides for planning of this site and transparency and reporting and the ability of the town to get their arms around what's happening on the site, assurances that all of the federal regulations are being met, sharing of inspection reports, violations if they ever occur, and fines, constant reporting and oversight to the town so that the town has a handle on this property and can properly plan for it and regulate it instead of leaving this seventy-year black hole for future generations to have to deal with. It's difficult for the town to deal with, it's difficult for a landowner to deal with who's trying to plan a business. There are forty employees of this business. This is a community asset. This is a very important quarry. It has very unique rock that's used for all kinds of applications, seawalls, Army Corps of Engineers, all over the region, many municipalities. Microphone, Mike, sorry. David?
We have a long list that we'll present at the hearing of municipalities, including this town, Smithfield, Cranston, Newport, Army Corps of Engineers, Rhode Island DOT, Mass DOT, Connecticut DOT. This is a very, very valuable resource to Public Works operations in many places, and it provides a source of income and sustenance for many families in this community, many subcontractors. And so there's a lot riding on this. And at this time where the politics of things often gravitate to extremes, we're hoping to avoid an extreme where, you know, we've got a use variance that says you can go to the property line and you can do what you want, and that's because you have a historic right, and that's what we're going to do. That's an extreme that favors us. The extreme that favors some people perhaps is that this quarry operation is shut down, and these people lose their jobs, and it ceases to become a community resource, and it's a black eye and a wasted site that remains unreclaimed forever. And we don't want to see one of those things happen. We'd like to see some kind of reasonable balance that protects the town's interests and the landowner's interests and hopefully promotes the overall welfare of the community. And that brings us to the text amendment that we have proposed and the structure of that text amendment. And I'm going to just spend a few minutes now, and it won't be much longer than that because we do want to hear your questions as well, but I'd like to direct you to the proposed amendment itself, which in the package I gave you is right at the end. It's after the map. And it's a few pages, but I do think it would be useful for me to walk you through it, and it may help your contemplation of it between now and when we return here on the eighteenth. It's a zoning amendment to a portion of the zoning ordinance, and it starts with a statement of the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And these first paragraphs on the statement of intent are really what I've been talking about for the last few minutes, why we're proceeding with a text amendment instead of a more aggressive use variance demand based on nonconforming use rights. We identify the property as this eighty-nine acre tract in the first paragraph. We're indicating that the uses are not a permitted use in the zone, or any zone for that matter. And we're indicating that the status of the property and the zoning ordinance, the earth removal ordinance which came after these uses started, and the zoning ordinance which also came, this zone came after these uses were already well underway, that existing zoning is limited, complicated, and inadequate by reason of a number of things. The first one is this longstanding pattern of use of the property as a quarry. Second, the unique rules applicable to continuation and expansion of nonconforming uses that involve diminishing assets. The diminishing assets doctrine in Rhode Island, the Cardy case in Rhode Island, that a mining-type use can continue to expand to other areas of the property because to deny that would be to cause the use to stop, and it wouldn't be grandfathered if it had to stop and could not expand to other portions of the subject property. Third thing is the historic merger and consolidation of lots. The zoning ordinance merged these lots into one, it's considered as one lot for zoning purposes. That's what the zoning ordinance requires to be the focus of this lot. So people may think about what used to be different lots there, but they're all one lot for zoning purposes and one unit in terms of expansion. The next thing is the lack of clarity and certainty as to the precise zoning status of the property, notwithstanding more than thirty years of litigation. I already talked about that. Judge Proccesini's been very patient with this case. Nineteen ninety-one cases were filed, nineteen ninety-nine, the judge has decided one issue, but he's held that ruling in abeyance and instructed us to go back to the town with, for administrative relief. And we've specifically conferred on what that could be. It could be a use variance, it could be a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. We've explained to him our preference overall for a text amendment as the, probably the fairest way for us to make sure the town can be involved here and look to protect its own interests rather than simply relying on grandfather rights. Giving up some of those grandfather rights, we felt would be important to a fair, balanced solution to the quandary that we're in. The fifth thing was the severely limited potential for other uses of the property in view of its location and its physical conditions. The next factor was the limited opportunities for oversight by the town that's resulted from the historic status quo and the litigation and the need and the desire for the town for greater oversight and public transparency with respect to the property. My clients have heard from some of you and other officials in the town that that lack of transparency is an issue that needs to be addressed, and we agree. The need for, the last thing is the need for, next to the last thing, the need for better knowledge of the regulatory status and occurrences associated with the regulatory bodies that are in charge of the property. The real environmental regulators are the EPA and DEM here. And we have these issues that come up from time to time where there's a suggestion, for example, a couple of years ago in a period of heavy rain, that the detention ponds near the Western Sand and Gravel boundary of our property, detention, retention ponds on our property, the quarry property, were somehow redirecting the stormwater flows of the properties in a way that could be damaging from an environmental point of view and possibly result in some type of toxic problem in view of the proximity of the property to the Western Sand and Gravel Superfund Site. That was investigated by Northeast Water Associates, who represents most of, many of the municipalities in Rhode Island, maybe North Smithfield, water hydrology consultants who said that was nothing but a lot of rain, there were no redirected drainage patterns. It was temporary, it came and went based on historic rainfall. And in fact, those retention ponds have a positive impact on the environmental stability of the area. So that was a, that, there was a very detailed report to that effect that was presented to EPA. They've taken no further investigatory or certainly no enforcement action as a result of anything on the site. The other similar EPA thing had to do with blasting, a suggestion by somebody that the blasting is somehow inordinate in relation to the project's approved blasting program. A consultant prepared a response to the EPA, looked at all of the blasting logs for eight years, and concluded that the blasting is not even at fifty percent of the allowable levels of intensity that are permitted on the site for blasting. There's absolutely no danger to any structure, any building in any proximity to the subject site. Very detailed, sophisticated, educated report submitted to EPA, no further action by EPA, never went anywhere. Now, those things are not, and you may hear about those types of things. Someone may say they're blasting too much, their retention ponds are flooding hazardous waste all over the town, school buses are getting run off the road, even though we've got a road permit that is in place, it's been issued by the town, that has certain specific provisions about monitoring school bus activity, and there have been no problems or complaints, to our knowledge, about anything associated with this property from any official level within the town of North Smithfield. But it's symptomatic, we think, of the problem with the lack of oversight. So that's when we get into what we're trying to do to change, that the lack of oversight puts the town in a position where they can't respond to these things, and sometimes a rumor gets to sound like truth when you don't have the information right in front of you. So we, I'll get to what it is that we're proposing in terms of transparency in a minute, but I do want to spend a minute on the next few paragraphs in here that deal with the comprehensive plan because zoning ordinance amendments are supposed to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan specifically recognizes and identifies the development limitations in REA land, noting that only ten percent of all residential estate agriculture land is developed, and that they're likely to stay that way in terms of residential development at least because if the area encompasses the landfill, resource recovery, the Wilson landfill, and the Western Sand and Gravel EPA Superfund Sites, I'm quoting this now, less than ten percent of REA land is currently developed. Development proposals must consider the constraints associated with the existence of the Superfund Sites and the need to protect the Sladersville aquifer and reservoirs, Holliston Sand and Gravel, our other neighbor, an intense earth removal enterprise is also situated adjacent to the property, the North Smithfield Auto Salvage, and the Doringo Truck Body Enterprises. So that dynamic is recognized in the comprehensive plan as something that needs to be managed in terms of what happens to these properties that are, that can't be used for their permitted zoning purposes. The comp plan also notes that there is a significant opportunity within town that should be taken advantage of to further the economic development and expansion of the local tax base. I mentioned in here the materials from the property being in great demand for Public Works projects involving the entire region and some very respected Public Works departments statewide and regionally. And the comp plan also recites, and I'm quoting, "North Smithfield has very little undeveloped commercially zoned property remaining," and that "the town must consider both the flexibility in its land development process to encourage development of remaining industrial zoned land along with potential zone changes to add to the town's industrial base." In this case, it would be to avoid erosion of the industrial tax base. And the plan notes that eighty percent of the land in town is zoned residential, so the town has to look at maximizing and preserving opportunities for commercial and industrial land to be put into use and to be taxed by the town. So what we're proposing in this text amendment is to change the zoning of this parcel from residential estate agriculture to something we have called, and it could be called anything, but Industrial Special Management District Number One, a special management district for the planned development of a unique area historically characterized by mining, quarrying, and similar activities. So the amendment would make those activities, not some other activities, but the current scope of the operation. We're not trying to change the operation that the town has been used to for the last ten, twenty years. It's to maintain what's being done, not to jump into some dramatically different degree of that. So that activity would become a permitted use, but it would become a permitted use subject to conditions. And here's where the other side of the balance comes in with things that don't presently exist that would be available to protect the public interest. There has to be a site plan approved. We have a site plan. We have a site plan that we've submitted as part of our application. It's hard to see here, but we're proposing certain buffers. We've got a fifty-foot buffer planting detail from the residential areas. It's shown in the green, light green line there, fifty-foot buffer treed. There's also berm, ten-foot berm associated with that that rises as high as eight, eight feet, six feet, and other other areas. So a very substantial berm to protect residential properties, along with perimeter fencing for safety around around the property. That plan would have to be vetted by the planning board through development plan review, including the fencing, berming, landscape screening, and also we're we're proposing to take a look at benching and stepping of of future excavation so that it occurs in a reasonably well-planned state. We had some graphics of of the benching and stepping. These these issues are not controlled right now. Even though we're not subject to the soil erosion and sediment control, we're exempt from that, we would agree nevertheless voluntarily to behave substantially as if we were covered by that ordinance, and and by December thirty-one of each year, provide evidence in writing that the existing excavation operations accomplish the objective objectives of that chapter and prevent soil erosion and sedimentation from occurring, and procedures regarding water disposal, soil erosion promote the safety and public health and general welfare of the town. Basically, an annual stormwater management and sedimentation control report to the town how we're doing. We'd need outside consultants to assist with that. But that's something that is a is a legitimate issue when when you're dealing with this type of earth earth removal. And then within another thing is that within thirty days of the enactment of the amendment and upon request by the town thereafter, the owners will provide the building officer and the town administrator with a listing of all state and federal permits that are in place, as well as documentation with respect to any occurrences associated on the property with those permits, including blasting, air quality, water quality, wetlands protection, stormwater management, and mining safety. So if we get a an investigation report, if we get a notice of violation, if we get a complaint, if we get a a fine on mine saving, mine safety, whatever's happened during that one-year period becomes a matter of required emphatic reporting to the town. We also have to keep our our road permits in place and and follow all of the requirements of the road permits, include bonding. We have road permits for this nonconforming use. They've been issued by the town, they're current, they're either in the process of being renewed by March, or they've already been renewed, I'm not sure which it is, but but we do have the road permits for heavy vehicles on on public roads, and and we'll have an emphatic provision in the zoning ordinance as a condition of our zoning that we keep those permits valid and and compliant in all respects. We're not limited, because we're grandfathered, to the sound provisions of the town's noise ordinance, but we'd agree to be subject to them to a to a substantial degree and observe and agree to observe them and limit our activities to between seven AM and six PM Eastern Standard Time, Monday through Friday, Saturdays from seven AM to four thirty PM, and to to not have any such activities on Sundays and legal holidays. So we'd be limiting the activity on-site that has noise implications to to times, which is not not a requirement right now for this particular use. And so there'd be a corresponding amendment to the to the zoning map. And then lastly, there are a couple of technical amendments that are not terribly important, but they just update the zoning ordinance. One of them talks about special exceptions for licensing of sand and gravel operations. You have to show evidence of your special exception. There's no special exception here, and never has been, because it's not been granted by zoning their grandfather rights. So this would change that to say either a special exception or or it being a permitted conditional use in the in the area. It just accommodates the text change and takes changes the word special exception for a for a zoning ordinance provision. And then there was an outdated provision dealing with appeals two years ago. As you may know, the the state made appeals from the zoning boards directly to the Superior Court, and there was a correction that needed to be made while we were while we were at it in this. Those are kind of technical amendments that I believe were pointed out by the town planner that they could be that could be cleaned up at the same time as these other things. So that's what we're doing, why we're proceeding in this fashion, and what we're proposing to do. It's not set in stone, it's not a take it or leave it. We'd like to hear your thoughts at the appropriate time. We'd like to hear the thoughts of the of the members of the public, but we're hopeful that you have so far found this to be a useful first step toward the more formal consideration of what we've proposed. Thank you.
Any councilors have any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Davis. Clarification. What he's proposing, I know we call it different stuff, is this an overlay, what you would what we would call an overlay zone?
That's what it is, yes.
Okay. And if it's an overlay zone, would anybody else then be able to petition, not just them, this company, but would anybody else be able to come and petition to do that in the if they're in the overlay zone? Suppose somebody else wanted to operate a mining gravel mining operation, so somebody else, because it's an overlay, somebody else could petition to then do the same thing?
That's the way I that's the way I read it. Doesn't mean they're going to get it. It just means they could ask for it to to get it from you.
Okay.
They they would need their own amendment, and they may have different conditions. If it's a superfund site that wants to do something else, you know, that they may not be doing quarrying now, they may want to do something else that's not permitted in their zone. So it's open for other people to try to mimic, but they the the conditions here are unique to the quarrying use here, and anybody else would have to have their own conditions adopted as part of their own amendment. It's not a it's not an automatic thing.
Right.
We're the only property that's being rezoned to this special zoning district, but you could choose to rezone other part other properties on other types of conditions for these.
So your overlay district is just within the borders of your property?
Right now, correct.
What do you mean, right now?
Well, you we're only proposing to make it applicable to our property, but the council would have the power to make special industrial special management district two. This is district one. They could do the same thing, but it would take another zoning amendment by the council to make what we're doing applicable to another property.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I just have clarification on, so your permitted use is in ISM three point four, number three, within thirty days of the enactment of the amendment. You have to show permits or air quality, blasting air quality, water quality, wetlands for a year. Why is it only a year, and why isn't that done on a regular basis?
Every year.
Anyway, now, is that given to the town every year?
Yeah, well, it was meant to be. If it doesn't say that, that's that's I think it was.
Well, it says for the preceding twelve months. Does is it going to continue?
Yeah, on each, the the idea was that by December thirty-first, every year, we provide a report on the preceding twelve months of of activity on all of our permits. That's a that's a no date, no end date for when that happens. That's every single year we're required to do that.
And do we do we receive that every year?
Yes, or or we're in violation of our zoning and subject to a cease and desist order from the building official.
So if there were any violations or anything, it would be noted in that report?
That's the idea. Investigation reports, violations, amendments to permits, and we're talking DEM, EPA, Mine Safety Bureau, anyone else with jurisdiction over the over the property.
Going back to when this all started, when roads were were used in a different, Tockland Road, an example, you had Wilsons from Warwick working very hard to get the rights to throw their garbage, their stuff there. And I believe it was a Mrs. Macachio, Ben Macachio's wife, wife who I worked with, and with the help from our our people, were able to open that up and bring their their garbage, which later on had closed the road because of pollution. You know it, and I know it, and the people did not know it. That road was used, number one, I'm going to say, in my, when I was a kid, was a great place to go parking. Everybody in town could line up on that road. Later on, you'd bring your children into the woods to do berries, best berries in the world, go through, grow the bugs, then it was all closed down. It was cut off, and it ended up being one of the very serious polluted areas of this town, a major area. Now, as we go along through there, we see, I'm looking at times, they're working, seven to six during the week. It's nice for people that are working want to come home and have it quiet, am I right? And then on Saturday, seven to four thirty, which is a right of the taxpayer that's living in these areas. They have a right also. You know, I'm all for inviting businesses in, but there can't be the price that we have paid on this, and I think it's a high price. I was rid in that area. I remember when you first started, because I had endures, and I know it was illegal, but we still went through your your areas because they were really great places. You could jump all these mounds, et cetera. So we recognized that place. You know, North Smithfield's not the greatest area as far as land. What we had has, I think, in that area has been compromised, the life of these people living there. And I knew it because it was a great place, we had our licenses, by the way, when when we drove up there. And as a child, I just think when the Nike site, they did their part too about pollution, because there's a pond where they moved a house on the other side, and the O'Harras cut ice on there for years. And then later on, when they went automated, we swam in it, crystal clear, and then Nike site came in, you couldn't even fish in it anymore. So I realize people have to make a living. I've seen what's come down. I know the people involved. Wilsons, and I was at the State House when all that was going through, because Mrs. Macachio's husband, I worked for him, we heard everything, and I listened. So as time goes on, there's places, but how much do we want to destroy? And how much are we actually making? I don't think it's enough to suffice. I know you have to represent, great presentation, and I listened, but I grew up in this area. I saw the difference, when more mills, et cetera, what happened to our aquifers, when the industrial drive, we always went the old Pound Hill Road, like this, like this, like this. Then they opened it up, and it changed the environment, what they brought in, because of the flow of the water, the whole nine yards. So at what price are we going to enable people to make a living when it's at the expense of the people who are living in that town? I believe it. I've lived here. My father was born where the old beef barn was, and he told me the history from day one. I learned how to swim in these ponds, they were crystal clear. And then when that industrial drive, forget Branchard's barn, because of the the salting and everything else, the vegetation came in, no one could swim there, forget unless we wanted to cut down all the weeds skating in the winter, it changed everything, and no accommodations were made then, and they could have been. At the beginning of when they started, it could have, accommodations could have been made, but they weren't. So, you know, your presentation was lovely. I knew what was, and I knew what isn't anymore, and we can't go backwards in this. That's all I might say. And I'm not attacking you. I realized you're here with a purpose. I realize this is my town, and I have a purpose also. I moved back here because of what there was. I look at people, I see their kids, their kids, and let me tell you, it's not even a town, it's a community. There's a difference. Anyone can pick out a town, but not everybody can find a community like we have. Thank you.
I respect everything you've said. So, Herr, I would just respectfully ask that you consider that we can't go backwards, we can only go forward, but we're suggesting.
At what expense?
Pardon me?
At what expense should you go forward?
Well, there's a choice to go.
So your clients can make a living?
Well, no.
And it takes away from the the quality of living for the people that are are living here, and generations have lived here? It's wrong.
Well, I think I think what we have to remember is that stopping the operation of the quarry is not something that involves flipping a switch here. There's there.
No.
It's either going to be a planned future for this property or an unplanned future, which has been the case for that area, and that's led to pretty bad consequences, where the town doesn't have.
That's right.
Control of the activity that's taking place. You can't always go back to square one. We've got a an active operation here that's got many years of mining ahead of it, and that'll either proceed in a planned fashion if the town structures some planning around it, or it won't. And I don't think it's better to go into the dark than it is into some light and structure that has accountability and transparency. That's the reason we've structured it this way.
If that can be done, I'd be very happy in that the taxpayers were agreeable, but it's their their town, and they should have a say in it.
Maya?
Mm-hmm.
So you indicated that there are homes that have water trucked into them. Is that because the wells are contaminated?
No, I think it's because it's just not, yeah, I think the aquifer, the aquifer is contaminated, and it's not a safe place to drill residential drinking water wells.
So where does the water that they use to put through their crushing machine come from?
I guess portable portable sources, Bob, the the water and the crushing?
The water we we use is tested.
Could you could you get up to the podium, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you get up to the podium so you can answer the question?
I'll answer that question. My name is Ryan Hurley, attorney. I also represent the applicant. I work for Keenan Plunkett Reddahan. To answer your question, is the water that comes is in the retention ponds, okay, which was tested by the EPA only years ago? It's regularly tested, it's it's it's.
And those reports are sent to the town yearly or not?
There's no, like, as Mr. Landry explained, there's no requirements that the town.
I thought he said a minute ago that they were required to send.
That's what we're, no, that's what we're offering to you guys, right? So we're offering you guys the ability to have these reports that you haven't been getting, okay? The only reports that you generally get right now are the blasting. Every time it's blasted, it's reported. But right now, there's no obligation to report the water testing that's going on, okay? So EPA regularly has tested that just recently. They had inquiries about the color of the water and the retention plans. Because it's seasonal, it does change colors, because algae grows and doesn't grow and whatnot. It was tested, and it's perfectly fine, okay? So and it's all it's used to control dust, but the the other thing that's kind of come up here is is that there's a lot. But the other thing that's kind of come up here is, is that there's a lot of talk about, you know, the environmental impacts of other properties that aren't associated with the mines, okay?
Well, my concern is if he is using groundwater that is contaminated to process stone, and then sending it all over Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Connecticut. Is that contamination going beyond, you know, that property?
The product is also tested regularly.
And those reports are-
Yes, yep.
-in their office?
Exactly. DEM regularly tests everything, the products that leave, is always tested, yes.
Yep. One more question. So, Mr. Casali's first note on this site plan. "All property lines shown on this map are a compilation of various record sources and not intended to be used as a certified survey plan." So I have a tough time accepting that. This is a huge ask. Seems to me the first thing that would have been done is a survey, an actual survey, would have been prepared before something like this is done. So has a metes and bounds description been done of this eighty-eight point eight-four acres, or is it just from prior to the purchase?
If you're understanding, if a Class 1 survey is done of the whole property-
Metes and bounds. Metes and bounds becomes the title for the property, correct?
The meats and bounds are all done, yes. It's just a compilation, because there are, the town has merged them, but there were multiple parcels that were combined.
So, but legally, is it one lot, or is it two lots? What does the title say?
One lot.
One lot.
So there's a metes and bounds description of this-
I don't know if it's been combined to one sheet at this point?
It is.
Yeah, it is.
And is that on record at the town clerk's office?
Yes, it is.
So if I go there tomorrow morning, I could see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But the, we're not asking the town to approve a, this plan-
You're asking the town to approve a lot.
Well, we're not asking the town to approve this plan. We're asking the town to approve a text amendment that's subject to Planning Board approval of development plan review for a plan on the site that includes these controls, maybe others. And I'd be surprised if the development plan review standards for the planning board don't require a Class 1 survey. So, I mean, that's, that's fairly typical. We're looking for the zoning to be conditionally made, subject to Planning Board approval and a public hearing process, development plan review, that usually does involve a Class 1 stamped survey.
So permitted uses in the ISM 1 overlay district, item A1, development's plan, site plan, approval by the Planning Board pursuant to Article XXV of a site plan or the property substantially similar to Exhibit A. Wouldn't that be this, so you're not, you're asking the Planning Board to approve this site plan?
We will have to get Planning Board approval for a site plan. It may not be exactly that one. It may be, they may require other things on that plan that are not there. They may require berms in places that we're not showing them. I mean, that, the idea is not to have the council become the planning board, but the council establishes conditional permitted uses that are subject to Planning Board approval.
So you guys are going with the Planning Board on Thursday, and then you're coming back here on Monday?
We only go to the Planning Board for advisory review on the text change amendment. If the text change amendment is approved, and it's something that looks like this, that requires Planning Board approval, we don't have anything until we go to the Planning Board and get development plan review for a site plan.
We're meeting on this Monday.
That's not unusual.
If, if nothing can really happen, if they're not looking for approval of this plan on Thursday, why are we meeting on this Tuesday? Why is this why? I don't understand the timing.
Well, the, in order for the zoning ordinance to be amended, the Planning Board has to provide an advisory recommendation to the council on comprehensive plan-
Based on this though?
-consistency. Not, they're not approving that site plan.
So is this gonna change before Thursday?
Not gonna change before Thursday, it's probably not gonna, unless the council wants to impose some additional conditions.
But you just said, we, you're, we're not being asked to say, to approve a site plan. So why are we gonna impose it?
But, but I'm, what I'm saying is, this is not unusual. If I was trying to do a ten-lot subdivision, and asking my property to be zoned for multifamily residences, the council wouldn't approve the sizes of the lots and the height of the houses. It would all have to get land development approval from the Planning Board on the gritty details of the site plan. There are certain things we've required here that are reporting issues, and buffering, and buffering, and stepping, and benching, and things like that, that require technical input from the town engineer, the town planner, the town, we've met with the town planner on this application, and that's the normal process for the Planning Board to get into the nitty gritty. We're not trying to force this site plan on anybody. If they want a, a different size buffer in a different place, that's what we're gonna have to do. But the, the request is for a text change that's conditioned on, on the Planning Board approving the ultimate site plan. Which is very common. Every time you overhaul your zoning ordinance, it depends on years of activity by the Planning Board to approve actual projects that are proposed under that, under that permitted use authority that the council grants.
So can I just get clarification? Because I thought I just asked this question like five minutes ago, that we get this report already, and you said, yes, we do, but we do not get this report. This would be something you would start getting?
Yeah, this is, no, no, this is the proposal. The ordinance hasn't been amended yet. We have no control-
No, I'm talking about these reports that you're saying that we would get. I'm saying now, we don't get them currently?
No, you don't get them currently, because-
Why wouldn't we? Didn't you just say it's, that by law, you have to give them to us?
No, no, no. That's what we're proposing to do as part of this text amendment. Going forward, we're regulated by the EPA and by DEM. We have to give them all kinds of reports. The town normally doesn't get the reports that people file with EPA and DEM, when they, when they are regulated by DEM. One of the things we're trying to do to increase transparency here is, because even though the town doesn't regulate stormwater management, and, and reports, and mine safety, and accidents on the site, or water quality, those are all regulated by others, we will provide you every December 31st of a full report of all of our state permits and any activity involving those permits. Investigation reports, inspections, violations, fines, so that you know what's going on, on the federal and state level, in a way that you don't normally know what's going on, when you're, when you're dealing with matters that are not regulated by the town.
So you talk about transparency. Why wouldn't you just give these to the town anyway? Why, why should it have to be in the stipulation of this?
Well, if you ask us for it, we, we, we want, we have to, we have to do it on a, we're gonna do it on a regular basis. You don't get a lot of things from a lot of businesses in this town. It's not because they're bad or evil, it's because the town doesn't regulate environmental contamination and other things. Some things are regulated by the state. So we're trying to put you in a better position to answer questions that somebody might have by giving you as much information about this property as possible. We were informed, maybe it wasn't correct, that the town was having a hard time understanding what's going on with respect to the, with respect to the property. And they've got a complaint about water contamination or blasting, neither of which are regulated by the towns. And it's a lot of work for a town to have to go and contact those agencies to get those records. And we thought it might be good for transparency purposes for the town to be able to plan this property and, and have all of the databases available to, to it, that the federal government has and that the state government has. And we thought that would be a good thing. And that's why we're proposing to do that.
And the hours of operation, I don't believe that's what's in effect now, is it?
I think they are, yes.
Till, till seven, six-thirty at night?
Not quite that one.
No, I don't, I don't think so. It says from seven to six. I don't believe that's the hours we have in the, in the permit right now. Does anyone recall?
It's in the, that's what's in the, is the permit that was approved by?
By the town.
By the town.
But, how about that Saturday, until four-thirty?
Yeah, I don't, I would like to verify these times, because I think these seem a little bit long. I don't believe that these are the times that were approved.
We'll do that.
We can do that, we can verify.
Does anyone else on the council have any more questions?
Just a, once again for David. Dave, what is the difference now, as far as they're concerned, if they did an overlay, like they were requesting, or if they did a zone change?
What I'm gathering from Mr. Landry's presentation is, he's calling it an overlay district one, and it's only his lot. It is an overlay district one, but it's limited to what I understand is his lot.
Right.
But theoretically, somebody else could come in for overlay district number two.
Hmm.
And say, could you put it on my lot? So it's not an overlay in the sense of it's the whole town, but it is, it is, it could be if somebody asks for another overlay district number two, number three, number four. They're asking for district number one to be that lot. That's my understanding.
That's correct. Someone else would have to present their own zone change based on their own merits. Not everybody's been in litigation for 30 years, and a lot, not everybody's got the same things going on that we do.
Okay. Now, there's a couple of gravel companies in town, you guys being one of them, that were in operation before we had our earth removal and ordinance and all that. Could, what if you weren't grandfathered in? What if the rules that we have today applied, and you did not, you agreed to not be grandfathered in, but you had to go along with the rules and reg, I said rules and regulations, but rules and oversight that we have today on the books, instead of being grandfathered in? All the rules that we have today on the books would apply, and you would not be grandfathered in, is that?
That's right. But we, there is no zone in the town that permits quarrying or, or sand and gravel operations. It's not a permitted use in any zone. So there are no, every, that's why the zoning status of our property is based on consideration of grandfathered rights, grandfathered expansion, diminishing assets, rule about being able to expand non-conforming uses, and where that goes. And, and those are issues that can be resolved by litigation, or they can be resolved by planning. And we're proposing they be resolved by planning. If it goes by the litigation, you don't get all the conditions.
I understand. I just had a couple of quick notes. No, never mind, they've already been asked and answered. But I appreciate that. But we, I just have a problem with the grandfathered in aspect of it all. And I don't think, I, I just want the rules that we come up with today, or that have already been established, to be in effect and not be, and kind of not be grandfathered in as, as you were.
Well, we wouldn't be able to operate if we weren't historically operating as a sand and gravel operation. I mean, that's where our rights come from. So it's, that's why the zoning ordinance isn't very helpful. And, and so you can have your own provisions of zoning that we, that we agreed to as part of a zoning change, to put some checks and balances on a grandfathered use. But if we had a restaurant in a residential zone, they had weddings every Saturday, you can't tell them they can't continue to operate and have weddings every Saturday. But, and they, and they don't have to come back. We're, we're coming for a text amendment that puts some limits and controls and buffering, buffers the residential areas, berms, vegetative screens. These are things that nobody made us do as part of our grandfather rights, but that we are proposing to impose upon ourselves as part of a Planning Board approved plan to have some balance here with the budding properties that doesn't exist now. So there's, there's a give and take associated with this. The alternative is to go and, and if we get a use variance to allow this, this use on the lot, because residential use, the only other use it's zoned for, is not allowed, the judges, the court's not gonna say, but, oh yeah, but you've gotta stop at five o'clock, or at six o'clock, or at six-thirty, or you've gotta provide all your EPA, and they, they don't do that. What you can do is mine to the property line, okay? And, and that's, that's what happens when you, when you're dealing with non-conforming uses that aren't controlled by zoning. We're looking for an amendment that brings this use under the control of zoning to a reasonable degree, that, that recognizes that it has a right to continue, but puts some controls on that. And we can think about other things. You know, what happens at the end of the use? You know, there's, there's, there's ways to deal with this, and, and there may be other creative ways for the town to benefit from the continued operations here. But that's the discussion we're trying to have, to, I mean, there's no option here to say, okay, we'll comply with zoning, we'll turn over the keys tomorrow morning. We, we can't give up our grandfather rights, you can't ask us to do that. But at the same time, we can't ask you to change the zoning of the property unless there's something in it for you, that gives you something better than naked reliance on whatever our grandfathered rights might be to expand. And so that's the push and pull of this, that's meant in good faith, certainly not to offend anybody, but to have a constructive discussions here, so that we don't have an extreme result, one way or the other. Not knowing exactly what will happen to this property. We could have another 30 years where there's just litigation. Nobody here can answer a question. And, and Mr. Pezza just keeps mining the site without any local controls, just the federal regulations. That's the status quo now. We're trying to make that better for the town. And that's why we're, we're here, and we proposed it this, this way. It could be other things that the town wants, too. And that's why we wanted to come a little earlier than the 18th, to get that, that discussion going.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, since we finished up the workshop at eight o'clock. I'd like to make a motion to open up to any public discussion by anyone in the audience. That's a motion.
I'll second.
So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call. One second. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Claire?
Yep.
Rebecca Recues. Uh, yes. All right, we're gonna open up to some public comment. If we can, we're not gonna time it, but if we can kind of keep it down to a minimum, then we can start over again, and maybe we can go for like-
I'll have a show of hands, see how many people-
Yeah, how many people would want to speak?
Two, three, so like-
All right, so if we can maybe do like five minutes, and then we can go back around, try it again. So, who's first? Jason?
Just wanted, just for the public's edification, be, be aware that these comments are not part of the public record for purposes of deciding this issue. That is scheduled for the 18th of February. This is, this wasn't even scheduled for public comment tonight. So these are comments, but they don't have any effect of being part of the public record. So please make sure that if you want them to be part of the public record, that you either come back on the 18th or produce them to writing. I wouldn't want anyone to leave here thinking that they had said their piece, and they had, it was part of the public record, okay?
Jason Richer, 45, Douglas Pike. I'll make it real brief, I won't stay up here too long, just a couple of things. It was mentioned that water was trucked in, piped in, whatever. I do not know of anybody that's getting water trucked in or piped in, anybody at all. It was mentioned that the water in the, in the quarry was tested by the EPA. I spoke with Joe Cunningham, the manager of the Western Sand and Gravel EPA site. He told me that the water in the, in the quarry was tested, but it was only tested for biologicals and for chemicals used on the property. So it was not tested for other contaminants that we know are in the Superfund sites to the east and west of this, this property. The third thing, John, you spoke on, grandfathered rights, is one thing I'd like to mention, and I'll leave it at that. This property was purchased many years ago by the Eldepezzes. If you look on Google Earth, and look at year, say, you can look at historical photos of, of the property. In 2011, the property was pretty much a sandbank, and you could see that there was some, some quarrying going on, but that was it. In 2012 to 2013, they installed a concrete foundation for a scale, a concrete pad for a, for an office to go buy the scale, which they called the Scale House, and they put in a massive concrete base for the plant that crushes. Now, a certificate of compliance is necessary for use of any property- Now, a certificate of compliance is necessary for use of any property, whether it be lived on or used for industrial purposes. This property has never had a certificate of compliance. In nineteen seventy-nine, when the moratorium went in place, the zoning inspector should have made notations as to what the current operation was, meaning exactly what was taking place on that property, and that is what was grandfathered. And at that time, no scale, no Scale House, and no plant existed on that property. Now, certificate of compliance, if you would have given them one, which you did not in two thousand and seventy-nine, June of seventy-nine, when they changed the ordinance, in fact, I think they had like fifteen months to do it, no one followed through with that. In fact, it was done with a quick, a quick claim deed, actually, for one million, two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars, so it was a sale. That also would have negated a grandfather clause, and they would have been required to follow a whole bunch of zoning steps to stay in business. They didn't do that either. But the backup began in two thousand and twelve, they went in, they installed the scale, Scale House, and the base for the plant. The plant went into place after they purchased it in two thousand and fourteen. Those are three things that I just mentioned would have changed, would have been called a change of scope, and it would have negated any certificate of compliance that they had. You have a certificate of compliance, it's only good for the purpose that it was, that it was written for. The moment you change, it's no longer good. So in two thousand and twelve, if they had a certificate of compliance, which they didn't have, and you need one to operate, and they don't have one, and why they're running without one is beyond me. But in two thousand and twelve, if they had one, they lost it because of the, the unpermitted, they didn't even get building permits for this stuff, by the way. And then again, when they installed the plant, the crushing plant, they turned that whole place into, you know, processing quarry. It was just a quarry. It turned into a full-blown quarry and plant, and selling out to private contractors coming up on a regular basis, and that's most of the trucking traffic, the nuisance traffic that we have, the private contractors. If you look at our schedule for what's allowed in a residential zone, any residential zone, sales are not allowed, and they're not allowed by grandfather clause because they are not grandfathered. They're not, it's, it's as simple as that. I took more time than I needed to, but that's what I wanted to get across. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next?
Rebecca De Cristofaro, nineteen thirty-one, Pound Hill Road, I'm speaking as a resident tonight. First and foremost, I would, I'd really like to thank you all for the presentation, your perspective on the amendment. I also would like to thank you for the conditions that you've outlined, that you've so generously outlined in relation to the quarry on Pound Hill Road. I would like to make mention, as a resident on that road, I do not have water trucked in. If we are saying that the water is contaminated in that area, then I guess I need to get my well tested, since I've lived there for eight years, and I've only ever used a well, and I know all of my neighbors have wells. So living over a contaminated aquifer is news to me. Additionally, I would just like to mention that currently, I'm not going to move far from the mic, my property is right here. They, right now, they, they, they operate within a two-hundred-foot buffer. Recently, I would say within the last six or seven months or so, they have raised a number of trees all along this line, here, and even up onto the right-hand side. With those trees coming down, it has substantially decreased the, at least the, buffering the noise from the quarry. My concern is that this map is proposing that they can excavate up to fifty feet from my property line. So all of the trees that you see from that line, from the quarry between my property line, that's about two hundred feet, well, let's say a hundred and fifty feet, they would come into the property line. Right now, we already don't have a buffer area. The amount of fugitive dust that leaves that quarry, it is unbelievable. We have, I have a neighbor who has a beautiful organic farm, and just to see on every windy day, during every blast, the amount of dust that moves through that property onto our properties is just, it's sickening to be absolutely covered in dust on a windy day or during a blast, and for them to propose that they can operate within fifty feet, we will have no buffer from fugitive dust. I wasn't prepared to say anything else tonight because we have the public hearing on the eighteenth, but I did want to make mention, just in a response to, to what the lawyers went over today. I, I know, having lived in that, on that road, in that area for eight years, I mean, I have nothing against the business, right? I don't, I don't, I love our town, I love where I live, I'm very proud of where I live, and I want to be sure that we're making, that we're, that our town is making decisions on behalf of the community and the residents. What concerns me is that this amendment, as a resident, this amendment would allow for other businesses, other developers, to come in and apply for a permit to essentially use the same overlay. So that opens us up to not just continuing to quarry behind on Pound Hill Road, but this opens us up to quarrying and mining businesses in the town of North Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else want to speak? Yeah, is there anyone else that wants, that wants to speak?
Motion to close public comment?
All right, we have a motion. Anyone want...
Second? Do you second that?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Sorry, John?
Yes.
Claire?
Yep.
Rebecca recuses, yes. Okay. All right. All right, with that...
Can I just ask another question? Sir? Excuse me, sir. Could you, you listed some conditions that you were going to, that don't exist now, that you were gonna, in order to pass this, what you're proposing?
Yes.
Could you, could I possibly get a list of those conditions?
Yeah, they're right on the, they're part of the text amendment. Let me, we'll just show you right where they are. The text amendment on page... Four. See where it says Roman numeral three, amendments to chapter three forty, zoning?
Yes.
And then on page five, it says permitted uses in the ISM One overlay district. It's section three point one point four. Subsection A, capital A, has one, two, three, four, five, five conditions. Little, little one, little two, little three, little four, little five. Development plan approval by the planning board of a, of a, of a plan substantially similar to Exhibit A, but whatever the planning board wants to change, primitive fencing, residential buffering, buring, landscaping, screening from adjacent residential development, benching and stepping of excavation at feasible locations. Second, an annual report on soil erosion and sedimentation controls before December thirty-first of each year, evidence that, on soil and sedimentation. The third one, within thirty days of the amendment and upon request. And that's, that's meant to be each year of activity within the preceding twelve months. Actually, the town can request it at any time for the preceding twelve months of all blasting, air quality, water quality, wetlands protection, stormwater management, mining safety, all those federal and state regulatory actions and status. We would provide those. The fourth one is that the road permit has to be kept in place, that has certain requirements for bonding and getting notice from the town, a school bus schedules and so forth. That's a regular practice that's in place that would continue. And then the sound issues and the hours of operation in five, we've been asked to confirm that what we're proposing is the same as what applies to the road use permit, and that was our intent. If we missed it by a half hour or whatever, we'll definitely correct that.
You know, I'm thinking, when you were saying that this is not, there's not enough time, so... I agree, I kind of agree with David that saying that there's really not enough time for us to come up with additional conditions, because these conditions, to me, I think would just be a starting point, right?
Yes, yes.
So we would have to come up with, if we were seriously considering this...
Yes.
Our, our own conditions.
I, we're inviting that discussion. That's why we're here on the tenth and not on the eighteenth. We have the planning board on Thursday night, they may have recommendations as to other conditions. We had asked for a work session with them as well, it didn't work out. I made the point that we're not, we're not going to hold the town to the sixty-day deadline to act on this amendment. The town wants another month, or another two months, to, to investigate this, confer with the planning board, have another work session, you know, work with outside consultants. That was what I was trying to convey at the beginning, that we don't, this is not a, a take it or leave it proposition. We had to come up with something we thought made sense for both sides, but it doesn't mean it's the only way to do this. It's planning. Planning is a group process, usually involves the planning board, and it usually doesn't happen in two weeks or, or even a month or two. You know what it takes to do a comprehensive plan amendment. We're not doing that, but it's still a serious bit of planning to make sure. We think we've structured this to make it clear that it's only grandfathered, that it's only our property, and that anybody else that wants to do something else and create a different use in this zone has to rely on their own history. This isn't meant to be, we didn't create a new permitted use in any property other than this one. And it's based on our unique circumstances that take up all of the recitals that come before the actual language of the text amendment. If that needs to be tightened up to make sure that this, that someone else has to apply and it says that, and every project is evaluated on its own merits, that was the intent, and I think we did that, but that's clearly was the intent. We knew you wouldn't, we knew nobody should be treated exactly like we are. I don't know, there's not another property in the area, or in the town, or maybe even in the state, that, that matches what we have here in terms of the zoning status and the future ability to, to expand.
I was just gonna, kind of along the conditions and your comment, kind of answered what I was going to say. Just a, a response or some sort, some sort of reassurance that you're gonna, you know, try to contend with your fugitive dust, you know? Talk about giving us reports and, you know, a couple of other things, but, you know, that's silica. And from what I recall, you know, silica causes cancer, and is a, was, and probably still is, a huge OSHA. I know you guys aren't, you are subject to OSHA, but you also...
We are subject to EPA and OSHA, and that's a legitimate request that we will absolutely address.
I can report that it's regularly tested.
What is regularly tested?
Can you go to the mic, please?
Yep, sorry. Again, Ryan Hurley, I, I can report that silica is regularly tested by, on the employees. They have monitors that are put on by mine safety and, and the levels of silica.
About the organic farm produce that Ms. De Cristofaro mentioned?
That, I don't, I can't speak to other properties, Mr. Punczek, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't speak. I can speak that the employees that are on the site, who are closer than the property abutting, are tested regularly by mine safety for silica, and it's within regulations. I can also, while I was sitting, I did go look at the, the road use permit that was approved. It's the one that actually hasn't quite expired because expires in March of this year, but the times are a little different, we can amend to comply with this.
And what are the times?
The times on the road use permit would be Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM, and then on Saturdays, from seven to three. And that's, I'm looking at the signed document by the town, the planning minister. I can't speak to the one that was recently submitted and what was requested and what was planned, but I don't know the answer to that.
Can we possibly get the report that was completed on December thirty-first?
What report?
That would be mentioned in this, in the criteria here for the, that you do every year on December thirty-first?
So the answer is, there is no comprehensive plan. That's what we're offering the town, okay? So DEM, mine safety, EPA, don't have a, by December thirty-first, material sand and stone, you need to give us an, an annual report, okay? That doesn't exist. They have, they're each, they don't speak to each other, they have their own jurisdictions, and they do their own thing, okay? What we're offering, right, as, as an ability for the town to have oversight and control and to see what's going on, which it doesn't have right now, is the ability for the town to have something that those agencies don't have, is the ability to say on an annual basis, we want you to provide those reports, so you guys can look at them and make sure they're being compliant, okay? But there is no annual report that the, the business puts together and submits to all of these agencies. They're all, they're all different. Like EPA doesn't, you know, has, certain, certain years are different, right? They have questions that need to be answered within thirty days, those can be done some years and not others.
So I guess...
President, if what you're asking us for, though, is that while you're dealing with this property, you would want to see what that report would look like if we had submitted it on December, in other words, if we were bound by this ordinance and we had to create a report that listed our permits and all regulatory encounters, inspections, violations in the preceding twelve months, we could, we could probably do that.
That's what I'm, I just want to know, are there any, are there any violations? What are, what is the water testing? What is the air testing? Like you, like you said, you, you're coming to us, asking us for something, but we need to make sure that everything is in order on your side, too.
Oh, absolutely, and we, we didn't want to, this was a work session, and we have, we have environmental, a, probably the best hydrologist in the, in the region, works for many towns, who's looked at the water issue, the detention ponds, or somebody else has looked at the blasting and done a very detailed report based on blasting, going back eight, five or eight years. We weren't going to bring all those people here tonight, we, we wanted to identify the issues to get them on the table, but we're, we're going to present those people to you at the hearing and have them testify on these impacts issue, and we will develop that report on all of our permits, right? We can do that, we can, we, I'm not sure if we can do it by the eighteenth, but if we continue that to the following month by agreement, which is something that, that, that rules to protect us, if we can waive that and permit a longer period of time to get you what, what you need, but I don't see any reason why we can't create that document so that you'll see what you'd be getting every year if, if this was adopted.
I can actually guarantee, I can provide some of the stuff that we provided to the EPA within the next day. That will include the report from the hydrologist and, and seismologist.
And the reporting we do on the silica and the...
Yeah. You can start getting that.
Do you think we're going to be ready? It's, it's practical that we would actually have a meeting on this and to decide this on next Tuesday? Don't you think that we, we need more time? We need more time for that report to come through? I, I would like to get some feedback from the planner and the planning board as to what our, our conditions, in addition to their conditions, could be, counteroffer, so to speak. I think there's, a week's just not going to be enough time.
Yeah, I mean, we just found out about this workshop, you know, we were just, it's not something we knew about for a long period of time, so we're kind of like...
Well, we, we asked for the workshop because we didn't want you to just find out about it on the eighteenth, so this was to try to get things on the, on the table. This is all, there was a, an advertising deadline that was dictated by the state law that none of us had any control of, but I do a lot of major zone changes, and I don't think I've ever had one of them where the app, that's complicated, and they usually get the, get those, that where we haven't modified that timeframe, that's routinely done. We can extend the time for the planning board to make its recommendation, we can extend the time for the council to act, and that was the whole purpose of this work session, that just identify that there may be some lead time considerations and issues that you can't deal with all on the same night. That's why we're doing this, and, and proposing to move the process out a little bit so that you don't feel like you're, you're rushed.
So Mr. Igliosi, so even though it's advertised for the 18th, we can still have a public hearing and get the public's input, right? Not necessarily have to make a decision on the 18th, but if we have too many people on the 18th, we can always keep going with it, correct?
The state law does not require you to complete the public hearing by that theoretically, the 65 days, but it required you to open the public hearing. And Mr. Landry is offering that even if the 18th is not sufficient to complete, that they're willing to continue it. And so you could theoretically continue the public hearing from date certain to date certain until you're finished with all the information you want, and then you have 20 days to issue a decision. But the applicant seems to be more than willing to work with you on those timeframes.
Okay.
But I, but so theoretically, on the 18th, you'll have the benefit of the planning board's review, and if they continue it for some reason, I can't speak to that, then you could take that into consideration. But on the 18th, you would open up the public hearing, take information, and then, you know, set a time limit, don't have any expectation that that's going to be the end and that's just be the beginning.
Okay.
That would be my advice. But you need to start getting this information out and the public that advertised notice. You'd have to have a meeting on that date, no matter what, to establish satisfying the statute.
So when did the clock start?
It started upon the date they filed their application. They agreed to this timeframe that you have, 13 to 14, which is technically a few days late, both as to the 45 days and as to the 65 days, but it was done by agreement. The schedule was, my understanding, I could be wrong, is the planner sent the schedule to the applicant and the applicant agreed on the schedule, so the statute says if there's an agreement, there's an agreement.
That's correct. It's in emails with the town planner, that we agreed that these were the days that worked for him, and we had no problem.
So now the advertising is complete, so on the 18th, open up the public hearing, take the information, and then with the understanding that you're probably not going to be close to finished on that day, what I'm hearing.
I think the same probably would go for the planning board. I think we're open to that. The idea here is that we're willing to hear what the town has to say and open to considerations.
Council, have any more questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so just a reminder that we have the public hearing on Tuesday, the 18th, at 6:45. If there's no other questions, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.